Meeting in order, planning and zoning board. First order of business, a previous approval of the agenda that we have pursued. Second? Move to second approval of the January 13 meeting notes. Any questions? Additions or subtractions? Call for a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Get to the discussion on the assigned city code sections. Before we get started going around the room. I know that I spent quite a bit of time this past few days reading this code. And, of course, I don't think any of us are attorneys. Although I taught business law at one time. I am not used to a lot of these legalese and I know they were prepared by attorneys, reviewed by city council. And then laid upon this group here to look at, approve, or disapprove, or make questions about the same. I don't know if this is going to take a long time or a short time, but it seems like one heck of a lot of work. And I know that we, there should be some specific questions asked by council, I believe, as to what section, or we'd like some input from them, as to what they're questioning. Now, is this just a matter of procedure as indicated? Is it a matter of law?
Well, I-
And I would, I would ask anybody that speaks to just take their mask down because we're not going to infect anybody at this distance. And you can't understand half the stuff you babble through a cloth.
Well, just, just to kind of clarify, we did this two years ago. We went through the code and the committee went through and picked out the things that looked at-
Down a little bit further.
And made, made comments, okay? And then we gave them to the city attorney and he adjusted those recommendations after the report was given to the city council, if they wanted to adopt them. And, and this is kind of the same process and I got to give Wanda credit because she did this. And that's what they did two years ago. They went through, made a little spreadsheet, kind of went through the sections and just asked everybody if, okay, do we need to, you know, like, I'll just use the first couple of things. Proof of enforcement, proof of delivery, adding a photo, that's probably a good idea because sometimes those enforcement things come back to us, they're certified letters and we get them back. So what we do, we post it so, and we do take the picture, but it doesn't say that here. So maybe we need to add that word.
Lynn, what, what we'll do is go through this later on, but I was just making a comment as chairman. We're in a situation to pursue this and I think we're putting in a lot of, a lot of time on things that we-
And some of it, you don't even have to change anything, really.
Well, that's what I'm looking at. I'm seeing things that are put out and approved and written by an attorney, approved by council, passed on, and servability and everything else. And then we're looking at it and if we see something, I'll give you, for instance, I went through this marine thing for Beller Beach. I see absolutely nothing wrong with it. Absolutely nothing. It says, "Report something when you see it's wrong." That seems very reasonable.
Yeah, the, the only thing in that area that I, I will tell you, and I told you last time, I think we need to have a little more teeth in it as opposed to, you see things, well, you know, if a seawall's pushing in or something, we need to be able to tell that property owner, you need to get an engineer to look at your seawall. That's really what we need to do because there's no one in the city that can-
I don't know what you mean by teeth. I really don't.
Well-
I'm going to ask Marvin to walk around and check every dot in the city.
No, no, you're-
He'll do it, I know he'll wish.
No, what I'm saying is, just something in the code that's, and that's why I gave you, I gave you Madera Beach, I gave you that little pamphlet just to look at. And that's something we'll discuss further. All I'm suggesting is that we have a way, if, if we get a complaint or we see something in our travels that looks potentially dangerous, that we, we have something in the code that says, you know, resident pleased, or however you want to put it, we'd like you to get an engineer to situate on the scene.
Not being vague.
Huh?
Not being vague.
Right.
There's a lot of vague in there.
That's right. And that's, that's what I'm saying.
I didn't understand a thing you said.
I, I said it's removing anything that's vague. There's a lot of vague in here that needs to be-
I think that any code you read is vague. That's why we hire an attorney to interpret for us. It's, it's all over the place.
Right, so, so that's, you know, when we get to that portion, we'll, we'll get some more detail. I, I think the, the first sections that we're talking about, most of that is just housekeeping. Like, we need to get rid of police department, okay?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Okay.
Uh, uh, and what Wanda did-
We'll get to that. Get to that. I don't want to jump into that.
Right.
I want to keep some kind of order.
Right.
I'm going to go out on a ride now and ask Marvin, what do you need?
All right. When I have written for Lynn, there was a couple of instances close to a neighborhood. The neighbor next to me, the seawall went down.
I understand that. He explained that at the last meeting.
All right, so on the other side of the bridge, I put together a basic list of things that a code enforcement officer could look at that would put a warning out there. One is a cracked cap. Two is no weak holes in the seawall to relieve the hydraulic pressure behind it. The next is horizontal cracks in the slabs. Okay, these are the old ones. Next is at low tide, when we do the inspection, if toward the waterline at low tide, you see a space between those slabs.
That was all in here.
That's in that form, that Lynn sent you, but we have nothing in our codes to indicate how a code enforcement officer should go and look at that wall to indicate that these are the items that warrant an engineer to look at the wall and determine whether it needs repair or replacement.
It's all listed in this, did you read this?
Yes.
It's all listed in there about the weak poles and the hydro sensitivity and the-
Right, that is something that I picked up.
And the French?
Right.
It's-
But we have nothing in the codes to indicate what a list of items are that an officer could look at to say, okay, we need an engineer to come out and inspect these seawalls.
And what would that cost?
That would say, okay, then once they inspect it, after they find a cracked cap or horizontal crack, does it need replacement? There is another step, but an engineer would have to look at it at that time to make sure, like at the end of all our fingers, or in an area where there's a lot of wave action, has the sea bed moved away from the bottom of the slab, which would then cause you to get the slab to move out with a lot of hydraulic pressure.
Okay.
But we can't do that type of inspection. That's just one part of it. That's in that manual that Lynn put together.
Okay, cross that bridge when we get to it then. Next is the unfinished business and we can go into the email that was sent out in effect by Rudy and I that we just changed the order in which we were going to procedurally conduct these code reviews. Now, we can go around the table and start with, I think we ought to start with Wanda because she's prepared a dossier that's very nice. Would you proceed in your observations, please?
On, on the-
Yes.
Okay. When I did this last time, I figured the best way to do a discussion is as I'm going through, make a note of the section that I had a point on, what question I had about it, if I had any suggestion for solving that question. A lot of these questions are just going to be discussed once we get here. And last time I had asked a committee member to do something similar, it doesn't have to be this format, but send them all to Patty beforehand so she can distribute so we can review them before the meeting. Because something I have a question on, you might have an answer for, and that might trigger something, or might trigger something else, so. And then the very, the very first one there was on the enforcement procedure. I, first thing I was reading that, I was thinking, well, why don't they just take a photo? Because FedEx comes by, they deliver me a package, they take a photo of that package on my porch. And I know process servers take a photo of you when they hand you that subpoena. So that's, that seemed like something that would be a good idea. And I just put it on there as a question as to whether that's something that would be possible.
Yeah, and realistically, we do that when we post it, just to have another document because you'll have people that, and I'm going to give you one that's coming up Friday. The individual's mailing address is a house that he rents here. He doesn't live there, he lives somewhere else. Well, all his, his mailing address is that street, so we mailed it there and it was returned to us. But we posted the property also.
Would you please lower your mask?
Oh, we posted the property also and we took a picture of it. So we've done more than we needed to do by the code.
So that's already done?
Yeah, but, but, but there's also-
But we need to add it to the, to say that's a person-
And there's also the section there says it can be hand delivered to anybody who is a resident of the property and who's over, you know-
Right.
-a minor age. But you really need to get a picture of handing that, that to the person if you're not posting it, because I, I know they bring subpoenas to the VA and as a receptionist, they can hand it to me.
Right.
And they would get a picture of me accepting a subpoena.
No, I-
So when I see them coming, I turn around and run away.
Yeah. What, what you put there, I think we, just adding a photo in that section is probably a smart idea, even though we already do it for when we post it. You know, your comment about publishing it in the newspaper, it's in the code that way, but we've never done that. That, you know, they've always mailed them, hand delivered them, I mean, actually-
This is part of the code enforcement, which is really-
Okay, then you're saying that this can be taken care-
Yeah.
All right, item D then?
Item D? Well, that, that's probably the state statute, isn't it?
Yeah.
So does that still have to stay in the code or is it, it's just something, it's like the checklist, you can never get down that far in the checklist?
Right, right.
So that's basically a-
Okay.
No point. And then on the foreclosure section, so the city can authorize the city attorney to foreclose on the lien. Have we ever done that?
So, not to my knowledge. I think we've had, I guess, we've never had a house with a lien that high. I think the highest lien we ever had was that house over there on, wasn't it, didn't it get up to like forty, Rudy? I can't remember.
Call it for Mike.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's a good thing.
And we settled with them at that time. They got the house done.
Oh, just the threat that they can do it, I think it's good to have it in there.
Yeah, no, it's, that's a good thing.
Schedule of civil?
Yeah, the schedule of civil penalties, penalties, there's the Lynn's that it says, it relates to specific chapters. Seems like anything in the code would be subject to civil penalties, or is there something I'm missing there?
Well, I think what it's listing is the sections of the code that there is a penalty allowed.
Oh.
Not, you know, that every section has a penalty. And it's, it's just giving you that information, so, you know, I, I don't think that's a big issue for it.
Okay, next.
Okay, the next one was the duty to provide written notice of foreclosure. If property's vacant, the owner or registrar must designate and return a local individual or local property management company responsible for security and maintenance of the property. Has this been an issue in the past or do we have clients?
For the most part, no. We, we have, you know, every once in a while, let's see, Mrs. Knoll was a problem, right? Okay, so, but that was a long time ago. We've got one right now that's under a property management, we've had to run that down a few times because these, when they go into foreclosure or the bank takes them, it's like they go in a black hole somewhere. You got to research and find out who's got it. And our code does require them to register that foreclosure with us.
It's in the code?
It's in the code.
Okay.
And if they, and if they, and if they don't comply, they're subject to penalty?
We could take them to code enforcement.
And if the registration not, must be received within fourteen days of the first citation for improper maintenance, it's fourteen days?
Uh, I think fourteen is reasonable.
Is it?
Yeah, it's a couple of weeks. Depending on what it is they've got to do, like as an example, I'll use one that we have on Gulf Harbor, they had to do a fence repair and put a new fence up, so you're not going to be a fence guy tomorrow to do it. It's, takes some time.
And the registration fee, was this fixed at a hundred dollars? Does that cover the cost of administering process? I think, I think the fees like that should-
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're not really doing anything, they're sending it to us, you know? They're, they're, and we're collecting it, putting it in the file to make sure we're aware of it and making it updated.
That's good.
On the next section is where I saw something, it says, they must inspect and maintain the property on a regular basis. I think regular probably needs a little more definition to it. And what would, what would be a reasonable amount of saying we need to inspect and maintain the property? Should that be monthly, bimonthly, at least once a quarter? Weekly would be too much.
Have you run into trouble with this situation?
No.
Well, that one on Gulf, yeah.
Can't hear you.
But that one on Gulf, yeah. So if we did it, you know, set a timeframe, like you're saying, I think that's a better situation as opposed to just say regular, what is regular? I think we're better off saying specific.
So that's a yes?
So, what would we say, is that reasonable?
Aye. Yeah. Okay, then we get to section B, the maintenance requirements, are the fines for failure, was that covered in 234? 234, I think was the list of, uh-
Yeah, the magistrate is the one that, she can fine up to $250 a day. And for things that are, those that were trying to-
So this is covered?
Yeah, the magistrate, when they come to plead their case, she, she has that authority. She can hire, fine up to $250 a day for the first violation and up to $500 a day for repeat violation. And then for the irreparable, which would be a good example, would be a short-term rental. We don't have as much of that as we used to. We had a rash of people just saying, I'll pay them $1,000. Well, the council, which isn't in your copy, but it's in the front, raised it to 5,000 for multiple occurrences, which hopefully if we get another one of them-
Sounds good.
-two or three, two or three times of that, you know, they're going to have a lien on the house of 15,000 or 20,000 dollars.
That'll teach you.
That's your work ethic.
Yeah. I mean, we've got one right now with a lien of $12,000 because of multiple thousand-dollar fines.
Good luck with that?
Well, they sell a house.
You do what you can, I understand.
But it's not a homesteaded house, so.
So, so you can lien it now?
Yeah, we, we lien it.
Okay, on 233, the sheriff's office will have the authority and duty to inspect properties. Are, are they doing that? Is there going to, is there a problem? I also question the wording that says, this shall be at their discretion as to what is adequate, and I kind of have a problem with that because we, we had the RV in the, in the driveway and the sheriff's office came, I said, oh, you have a permit for the, yeah, I saw that, he was going to walk away and runs it. We had no written, nothing written, there is no problem. Okay. Are they really doing a good job? I, I have not been pleased with the sheriff's requirements, totally the question.
Well, I will tell you, my opinion is they haven't been doing a very good job. And I think we're paying an inordinate amount of money per hour for what we get out of it. Forty-eight bucks an hour and-
It's a legitimate question, but it's not our purview to-
Right.
It's a city council.
Yeah. And realistically, part of the problem is when you have the sheriff do it, that's a deputy, okay? He's, he's a sheriff, he's not a code enforcement, has no background in code enforcement. The only background he has is, you know, if you read something in a book. That's my, been my concern and I'm-
Which is where leaving something vague like this at their discretion, that doesn't get the job done.
Right, right. So maybe there's something that you want to think about.
That's question. Okay.
Put more teeth in.
Yes. 5401?
Before you get out of this thing, Patty, did you email those sections to them?
The ones that-
Were missed?
No, I handed them out.
Okay.
They have them right now.
Okay. There, there's a section that you didn't get sent to you or didn't get put in the book originally, and it's section 2-350, which is our purchasing policy.
Yes.
And there's only one paragraph, basically, and it's 2350 that I, I kind of feel like, you know, I want some feedback, that this, this purchasing policy was written, or code was written many, many, twenty-plus years ago. And what you could buy for $3,000 20 years ago is a lot different than what you can buy today. And, you know, I want to make a suggestion that we-
What suggestion, what, where are we at on here?
On 2 section 350-
250.
3.
Three.
A.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It says 3,000 dollars. I'd like to recommend that that goes to 5,000 dollars, okay? And then in B, the three were changed to five to 10, that'll still stay the same, but with the other caveat that the city council may authorize an expenditure between 10 and 25,000 dollars upon receipt of at least three written bids, quotes, or proposals. Because doing a bid for something that's 20,000 dollars, it's very time-consuming and you can go to three vendors and get a price for it. Good example, we've got a bid out right now for, to put, I think it's six video cameras around the building. Well, that, that process is very cumbersome, very long, and really all you're doing is buying video cameras. And, you know, it would seem to me that it would be much more efficient if you could just go get three quotes instead of doing the advertisement, the newspaper, the documents you have to do, you know, big, big document. So those are a couple of things I'd like to see changed. The council still got to approve them, but it eliminates, and we've done this, we've suspended bid requirements for something like, what did we do recently? Oh, a repair on Donato Street is like 17,000 dollars. Well, by our document, we had, we would have, I had to bid that. We went out and got three quotes and then I submitted to city council and asked them to suspend the bid requirements. Well, you know, I'm, I'm taking that step out of there is what I'm asking, to, you know-
So, so you want B to go 10, to go 10 to 25 instead of-
Right, there, there's an extra sentence that would be in there, and I'll get you something, right, and clarify.
You, you prepare that? Will you prepare that?
Yeah, I'll send you something.
Okay, yes.
But the rest of the purchasing code is fine, it's just those initial sections and, from an efficiency standpoint, it's much easier. We're still taking it to city council.
Would there, would there be any advantage, Lynn, to put any supporting in there saying that these thresholds can be modified by council?
By resolution or something.
By resolution or as situations-
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Probably, that would give you more, more ability to go to council and bypass this kind of a process.
Right.
Would you bring that back to us? That would be fine, Wanda.
Okay, that, that's the only thing really in there. If we want to go around the room and stay in section two before we just pick the four?
Sure.
Let it, let everybody else speak, yeah.
And just do any add-ons if anyone misses?
From-
For section two.
For section two, sure. We've completed it, I was just waiting for it. Now we'll go around from right to left with the board. Rudy? Comments?
Yeah, first, one of the things I kind of, why do we do this? In section two, it's primarily code enforcement and special master, yet neither one of them was invited to this meeting and I think their input would be critical. What have they encountered so far in enforcing these codes? Where do they think there's shortcomings and what are their recommendations? There are people that do this every day and face the public and know the shortfalls. So I would recommend that somewhere in this process, that Susan Moore, who's the special master, and I talked to her today, she wasn't available today, of course, on short notice, I'd love to message for Dane Daughtry or Darkey, code enforcement officers, for them to come in, but at some point, I think the committee should request they come in and comment. Maybe we want to do it at the end of what we're suggesting and have them review that and give us their thoughts, plus add anything to it. But I just think those people need to be part of the process.
And just so you know, Laura is the code administrator, so she, she does all the-
This is the question, is it in this committee or is it sitting in my, at my left?
She's- She's the administrator for code enforcement. She takes care of all, any administrative.
Yes, if you wanna ask her.
And she was, she was the code enforcement officer until we did the sheriff mark-up.
Certainly by the end of this meeting, I think Laura's gonna have the opportunity to.
Yeah.
Give us some input.
Yeah.
Where she feels we need some upgrading. A lot of what I also see are too many may's and not enough shall's. First one I came to was when we talked about rental managers in Section 2, 245B, it says, tenants can be identified, may be cited for the violation. In addition for rental properties, rental managers may be provided a courtesy, should be, shall be provided a copy. And you said something about rental managers have to provide you with copies of foreclosures. Should we not have them, if they're renting property in this city, shouldn't they be registered? Every property that they rent, they need to register that they're the agent for that so that we know who to go to because they have to know the people that own the property or legally responsible for the property. It seems they need to be more accountable for properties they rent. They just can't come in, pick up the fees, and go home. Then you'd be accountable for some of this.
Well, you kinda talked about the rental registration.
The rental registration, we asked them to do that, but it's very hard to monitor which properties are being foreclosed unless we're notified. And the properties that notify us, they do register. Currently, we don't have that many that are in foreclosure, but then they renew their foreclosure and they send us the documentation. And a lot of the wording in Section 2 is taken deliberately out of the state statute. So where it says shall and may, that's from the state statute because may can be this way, shall be, and you will do it.
Right.
And that's why they specifically word it that way. And consequently, they do word it very vaguely, and that's how the state statute is also worded.
Yeah, but it's my understanding that we can, it's written here somewhere, that we can go over and above what the state requests.
I'm not sure of that.
Well, I'm not sure of that either. I just know that our wording here is from the state statute.
No, if, for instance, they say a fine is such and such, in their case, we can say it may be more than that, can't we?
You could, you could, yeah, the fines, there's a, like, as an example, and I'll use the short-term rental fine. The maximum city our size can go is 5,000 dollars. That's the max. If you're a city larger, I think it can go to.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand. Like, I think Miami charges 20,000 every time they give somebody 20,000 dollars. So, and those fines and things are, part of them are set by the state because they're level fines, like, I think it's called, is it polar? I'm trying to remember what they're called. Where we talked about the.
Are we getting into an area of interpreting the law? And I think we've overstepped what we're talking about. If it's in the law, it's in the law.
We're getting away from what I'm actually asking.
Actually.
Rental properties are far and above more problematic in the city than resident-owned and lived-in property.
Right.
So one of the key elements are rental managers. A lot of these properties are owned by people who don't live in them or live here.
Right.
So they're turned over to rental manager, rental agents. My thought is we need to make those people more accountable to us, more visible to us. If you're renting a property, if you're a rental manager of a property in Bel Air Beach, you have to tell the city.
That you're the manager.
That you're the manager, that property is all like contact information, and this is, these are the tenants, and this is the, you know, the particulars of the rental agreement or lease. You have to tell the city. If not, you know, may or shall, it is shall.
Yeah.
Tell the city.
Laura, has this been a large problem?
Are we talking about foreclosed properties or rental properties?
Rental properties.
Rental properties.
Just communicating with rental managers of rental properties.
We get very little communication with rental property managers.
And you need more?
Excuse me?
And you should have more, you need more, you feel it's short.
It would be very hard to monitor. It would take an extraordinary amount of our time to make them accountable.
And maybe it needs a penalty.
Excuse me?
And maybe then it needs a penalty. If you don't register a property as the rental manager, your property can be fined X number of dollars, and maybe then they'll.
Well, they can be, and I'll give you an example that's happening at a code hearing this Friday. They didn't pay their rental registration fee. We sent them two notices. They still didn't pay it, so now we're gonna take them to code enforcement. So now what will happen, the base administrative fee for a code enforcement hearing is 500 dollars. So it's gonna cost them 500 there, depending on what the magistrate does. She's gonna assess the registration fee and the $100 late penalty to them probably. So in essence, it's costing them 900 that they could've got done for 300. So, and she could charge an additional fine if she wanted to for not complying. So there is a penalty for not registering their property.
But there's nothing that says a rental manager has to come to the city and say, "I'm renting property in this city."
No.
"I'm responsible for this property."
No.
Just seems, it's common that we should have that coming from them.
I think you'd find that more in the condos than you would in these single homes because a good majority of these are just rented by, you know, the homeowner.
Again, is it a, is it a big problem, Laura?
It's hard to say.
It's hard to say.
When we give them, when we provide them their rental registration form, there's an area on there that we ask them to identify if they have a property manager.
Have you had problems with that?
I would say 95% of them come back with no property manager indicated.
Okay.
So we have no way of knowing whether they just failed to provide that information or they really are managing it themselves.
And if you happen to stumble across it, you go the route that Lynn was talking about?
Usually when we find out if there's a rental property manager involved is when we're having code violations at that property.
Okay.
Through doing investigation, then we will identify that there actually is a property manager involved. But 95% of the property owners who fill out that rental registration form do not put that information on there because it also changes. A lot of the rental properties only have a management company one year, and then the next year they change it. So they never update that information with us.
Even though they pay the fee every year?
They'll still pay their fee, but they're not telling us if there's a rental property. Either they don't have one or they're just admitting the information. And it would take a considerable amount of time to do all investigations for all those properties.
I agree that there needs to be some teeth there saying, "If you indicate no property manager and we find out later that there is, that's a problem."
Would this help you, Laura? Lynn?
No.
No?
No. When we need to find out if a rental, if there's a rental manager there.
Quite sure, we understand that.
We find a way to do it, but to have to do it for the 400 rentals that we have.
That would be my question.
Because if you do for one, you can't not do for all of them. So I would have to go through every form and then investigate each and every one and take an extraordinary amount of time to do that.
I guess my point was if you find out through code violations later that they've added a property manager or changed property managers and didn't, and you weren't notified, that there should be, not that you go investigate it, but you find out through other processes.
They answered that. They said they'd turn it over to the code enforcement.
Well, we're asking the homeowner, the property owner, to provide that information.
And I think if they don't even find out.
So if you want to find the property owner or are you finding the rental management company?
Well, you're, technically, you can only find the property owner. You can't find, you know, the management company, there's really nothing you can do to them because the code is for.
Shoot.
Is for lots of property. So if your property's violating the code, we don't go after the guy that's renting the house, even though we could, because the code does give us that allowance. If we wanted to go after both, we could, but we don't. We traditionally go after whoever the property owner is.
Okay, are you satisfied, Rudy?
Well, if you read 2-245 all the way down to K, it says managers of rental properties may file with code enforcement manager listed property. I think it should be shall. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Much the group wants to go with it. The only other thing I found prior to that, backing up to E8, notice that failure of the violator to attend the hearing may result in a fine being assessed against him, should be him or her. And that is in 245E8.
You want that may be shall as well?
Yeah, we, you want that one, the shall at the bottom.
K, yeah. K is managers of rental properties that are may, shall file with code enforcement manager of a list of properties they manage.
Just have it in there, why not?
And then your next edit was 245E8, at the end of it, it says against him, it should be him or her.
Because you have a may in it, the hearing may result in a failure to.
Oh, okay, you mean B.
No, it's on A, you have a may in there.
Oh.
Notice, notice that the failure of the violator to attend the hearing may result in a fine being assessed.
Who's that? Does that have the discretion of who?
The magistrate.
So that's discretion magistrate?
Yeah, yeah. But him or her, that's.
Are they having actual hearings or are they all done?
Can't hear you, Angela.
No, we haven't, we haven't had any for a while. We're having one this Friday, actually, three of them. Two for rental and one because a house isn't completed within the timeframe of the code. And he was given an extension and it's not moving. And I'm sure we know where that house is, it's on 25th. This is a big block or concrete monster. So he's, he's, he's over his two-year window. So we're taking him to code enforcement with this.
Do they do that here?
Yes.
Okay, because I know we got summoned to court jury duty and they said, "Forget it, everything's virtual," you know, so I just was curious about.
Yeah, we're doing it here. I mean, the magistrate can't, we're all distance.
You're satisfied?
Yeah.
Fine. Anything else, Rudy?
No, the. 246E, and the special master shall have the power to subpoena B, subpoena the violator who attended the hearing. Spina may be served by the city police department, probably should be deleted.
Yeah, the police department.
No base will ever have another one and no handle the sheriff or other authorized officers or sufficient, I think. Just housekeeping on that's one thing. And that's all I have for Section 2.
Well, Tegan, you note this, Wanda?
I'm sorry?
Will you note that?
I haven't found it yet.
He's keeping it a secret.
Was that in, where is that?
Yeah, it's 2, 247. E, Section E, and then B, Sub-B.
247?
Got it.
I don't see anything about police.
Yeah, it does, it's in B, right at the top of the.
City police.
247.
Yeah, I see that. City police?
Department, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Rudy?
Still on that section.
Thank you. Fine job, you and Wanda both. Angela?
So I just had a question on.
Can't hear you.
I'm sorry? I'm black today.
Oh, I don't blame you.
248, in Section 2, on B.
Say it again.
248.
Okay.
B.
B.
The fine of 500 being imposed on each case, is that still applicable? The 500 or the?
Yeah, usually it costs us about 300 from the magistrate, so.
I was wondering if it costs 500.
That's 40% profit, that ain't bad.
Well, it's not profit because you're mailing, certified mail, you.
I'm just trying to speed things up a little, Lynn, that's all.
And that was just recently adjusted.
Okay. And so the other fine amounts in here have been adjusted as well, like the 250 dollars per day?
Right. The only thing that's been adjusted recently is the very last line where it says 1,000, that's been raised to 5,000.
Okay.
Reduce that?
No.
Increase it?
We increased it to the maximum we could for the size of our city.
You got that?
We've already done that. We've already done that.
Okay.
It's just not the codified.
So we're trying to code, but it's not in.
Right.
It's taken care of.
Yes.
Okay. Angela?
I just had a question on 261. Do, A, city council may dictate certain employees or agents as code enforcement officers? Is that, like, on a case-by-case basis, depending on what type of problem it is? Like, they mentioned a fire animal control officer, I mean, do you specify if it's an animal issue, they're not using animal control?
That's, that's just a kind of catch-all phrase, you know? Laura does some code enforcement, I do some, you know, because things happen on the weekend and we only have our deputies.
So nothing exists? Okay.
It's not, that's not an issue.
Thank you.
We follow my orders.
And then on Section 311? E? I just, I had a question because it seems like this is being filed, like paper files. Do we have backup computer files?
Yeah, the ordinances are actually online.
Okay.
Yeah. The city clerk has to maintain the originals for all ordinances. The city clerk has to maintain the originals for all ordinances and resolutions.
It talks about binders and I just had this vision of these massive filing cabinets.
Well, but that's part of records management. There's certain things you've got to keep forever. We have minutes back to nineteen fifty, right? Yeah, so.
Well, if we were updating this and you weren't doing that anymore, I would just say, you know, maybe we want to.
Well, every councilman, we get a hard, gets a binder of ordinances and you bring them by every couple of months to get them updated.
Yeah, we have a pile of them here. It's not as much as it used to be.
So that's handled?
Yeah.
All right.
That was good.
Thank you. Brenda?
No changes, no comments?
No comments. I have nothing further except to say, fine job to those who contributed to this situation, including the city personnel. Now we'll proceed to number ten.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four. I didn't cross ten off. Smack. And again, I'll start with.
My.
Wanda?
My first point here was on the business or commercial businesses enterprise they've restricted. Have we had more businesses pop up since the pandemic, since more people are working from home? Has that been any possible?
Not that, not that we've noticed. The technicality of is there a business in your home is are you paying employees there? So that's very hard to say that someone's doing business in their home. They may be operating a private business, you know, but they don't have employees there and they aren't coming there every day. So we haven't, we don't really.
So you have no problem with the situation?
We have no control over that really unless we've caught someone.
Thank you.
Okay. So in the occupational taxes are imposed on any home-based businesses that are identified?
Right.
And then we got down to the fees. These fees, these all go into the general fund, right?
I'm sorry, you said yes?
Right.
So even if they don't have employees?
The, we don't have any businesses in the city of Ballard Beach.
That's what I thought.
Right.
Except the hotel, right?
Well, that's debatable and we're trying to get that rectified when we do our next complaint.
Let's not go there.
Yeah, we're going to try to resolve that issue.
Okay.
But at this point in time, we don't have any business.
Okay.
Which is primarily defined by definition of business. Part, and it's primarily defined by definition of business. You can have a whole office.
Right.
And you can have a own computer doing your number.
Right.
But if you're, the things I.
Have a client come to your house or things like that, then it's a different situation.
No employees coming in and out, no customers coming in and out, no massive product coming in and out.
Coming in and out.
Right. Yeah. Okay. We had those for a while.
We've had a couple of those before, finally.
Especially that big one on the corner. But these sets were just operations.
Please continue, Wanda.
Yeah, on the, on the fees, um, have there been any, any problems with collecting these fees? Any complaints or issues?
No, this is one that I think when they adjusted the rental registration, this was missed. And just my personal opinion, I guess, to some degree is the base for rental registration is three hundred dollars. Well, that first one, I think, should be three hundred. And then the ten should probably go to something like twenty and ten. Because again, these fees have not changed in, let's see, I'll tell you, probably twenty years.
So you have no problem with this situation?
No, I think they need to be adjusted.
Okay.
Have we done any investigation of other communities of what's usually normal?
No, we haven't, but we can do that and I can get you some information on that. The, the problem is, and we only really, we have three, right? Four or four? The timeshare, that falls under this. The motel, nautical watch, the motel falls under this. And the other resort, a portion of it has fell under this because the guy claims he's a timeshare. But that's another thing we're going to do a little more investigation into because.
It's beyond our pay scale.
Right.
Yes.
He's, he's got, he owns twenty-one of the forty-two units there. And the other twenty-one people have to pay the three hundred dollar registration fee. But, you know, he, he claims he falls under this thing because it's a timeshare. Well, we found out that he's not really a timeshare. So, you know, it's, it's a scurrying issue and.
I don't think we need to go there.
I don't, I don't think that, if he classified it so properly, he would be subject to this.
Right.
So we're basically looking at these numbers and for ten, up to ten rooms is three hundred dollars. Eleven to twenty, make it twenty. An over twenty, ten for additional. Okay, next to me.
Okay, Wanda?
I'm sorry?
The hundred, like what?
Three hundred, then twenty and then ten. And then a fifty-four sixty-two, did you say that that registration fee is now three hundred?
Yes.
Okay, so it just hasn't been updated here.
Right. It's now three hundred and the hundred dollar late fee is still there.
Okay, now, my concern on, on this next one on part B with the council, my future ministry annual rental registration fee by resolution, this doesn't and is not impacted by the state restriction on short-term rental stuff, right? Okay. Because I talked to Leslie and she thought that was why we hadn't changed it before. Because we got up to three hundred and it's come back down to one hundred.
Yeah, that has, the short-term rental section, I've told the council probably twenty times, leave it alone.
I think we were concerned, I think the concern here was that this would cross that line and get us in trouble with the legislation. Probably why we backed it off.
Right.
So.
One, one thing that we've, that I know Laura's talked to me about, and I don't really carry it away, making it a calendar year fee is the most fiscal year fee. Because I think, as Laura said, it confuses people. She's the one that deals with it the most. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Calendar's a lot easier to think about.
Yeah, because, because what people tell her is.
We send out the rental registrations and we send them out in September and they are due by October first. It becomes late this October thirty-first. People are very confused because some of them will pay and they say, oh, I paid for that year. Well, it's because we're on a fiscal year and their mindset is the calendar year. So it does present a little bit of confusion for people who are trying to comply and register and pay because in their minds, I paid during that year, I've already paid that year. But October first begins twenty twenty-one.
So you're handling the situation on a case-by-case basis?
No, they have to pay back.
No, I mean, it's, you're, you're taken care of.
I just, I think.
When the inquiry comes in.
It might be easier for the registrants if it was on a calendar year basis. Like our beach passes are on a calendar year basis. When you get a beach pass, it's good until, for the calendar year.
Is that your recommendation to this committee?
I think the rental registration would be easier for, for people to comply with if it was on a calendar year basis rather than a fiscal year basis.
That's a good situation. That's input from your committee.
So would.
You probably did it on a fiscal year basis because of the budget?
I'd like to ask for a motion from the zoning department. Did it go to a calendar year?
So would.
Second?
Is, is that in the code here anyway?
Yeah, it is. It's in fifty-four sixty-two A. So what do you want that October thirty-first date to actually read?
January to December.
It would be, uh, let's see, January first and January thirty-first. Yeah.
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 Say it again without your.
Oh, January first and January thirty-first.
But it went to the back until next year.
Right, right.
Would you do so? Note that, Wanda, please?
I have, thank you.
With recommendation from the zone? We on the last one? One five-three?
Let's see, I, I, mine went on, on over to article three. We have fifty-four one thirty-three. Oh, the homestead exemptions. I was just wondering if any notes need to be made here, be made here for the additional homestead exemptions that were approved in the November election. I didn't study how the wording would change due to that. But this seemed to have gone into a little bit of the detail about the exemptions. I was just wondering if I needed to be updated.
Yeah, we probably need to know.
Yeah, one fifty-three. I couldn't remember exactly what the new exemptions were. I think widows of disabled veterans.
Yeah.
Would inherit their additional exemption. There was one other that I don't remember.
Well, that was one of my questions also. And I copy, I mean, I made a copy of the application. So there were several.
Other.
And I didn't know why Ballard Beach just had one listed.
Did what?
Why we only have one listed, you know, the income.
Yeah, that, the income may need to, that, that could be different now.
Yeah.
Let's see, that's fifteen years ago. We'll have to look at that.
You'll probably just want to have Fred take a look at this and update it according to the new exemptions. Okay, that's my list.
Thank you, Wanda. Comments from the group? Rudy?
I didn't have anything of interest about.
Nothing? Angela?
I just have the homestead, which I gave the homestead exemptions. That was my question.
Okay. Brenda?
Okay.
All right, Lynn, do you want to say something about the homestead exemption?
No, we'll, we'll look, get those and make.
Okay. Are there any? I think that this group has done a hell of a job. Can't say that out loud on the camera. It's done a great job in the, the attempt to look at the code, at least the first two sections that we have. Now, the next one is scheduled for number ten, which will be by itself for the next meeting. Please?
Twenty-seventh at one.
Yeah, right. Twenty-seventh at one. Now, is there any unfinished business to come before this group?
Do, does the group want to hear from the special master and the current code enforcement officer in the city?
I think it's pretty well covered with Laura sitting there, far and I'm concerned.
I mean, she's not special master. Are there any issues there?
She's not.
Why don't you just assign me to discuss with them?
No, no, what?
Why don't you just assign me to discuss that with them, the, the special master and the code enforcement? To ask them if they have any and then I'll report back?
That's an excellent idea. Seeing you initiated the contact, it's.
I paid the price.
Yes, he paid the price.
I volunteered, right?
Yes. Any other unfinished business with the group?
I would just ask, Wanda, do you share this with us, your template?
It's just a word document, three, a table, three columns.
Okay. So this did come from this day and you just did this? Okay. Good job.
Donna, is that it? Wanda, you still spearhead? This was excellent. Thank you very much.
And I, I think section ten probably generate a lot more, so I'm going to go through it first and send it to Patty. She can stream it and we can, at least review questions. We have a few more questions that we have to come in.
Yeah, if you have any comments on this section, just send it to Patty.
Just what?
If you have comments ahead of time, then we can get that, send them to Patty and we'll get them out to everybody. So you've got to look where you've come from. Look at.
Are we going to be missing any pages on chapter ten?
No. No, chapter ten and the others are probably. I think ten and ninety-four will be the first. And a lot of that we've already updated, so it's just kind of going through and, you know, there's things that maybe we missed last time.
I do have it section four. Citizens' comments, and I see one citizen here.
J.C., the only thing that has come up is security systems. Okay, a lot of people are putting cameras around their homes, you know, outside surveillance cameras.
Oh, yes.
Around their homes. So how do you keep that camera from looking in the neighbor's windows?
Well, you put a counter camera on the other side and look at his window.
Right. Should there be anything, is that an issue? Could it be an issue? Privacy?
That is called the epitome of Pandora's box.
Absolutely. Should there be any?
Brings the word to me, enforceability.
Yes.
You can enforce it, but is it paid a dimension that cameras, if cameras installed and they have that outside security type system that must not go beyond the, the borders of the lot lines?
I don't think this committee is in that situation.
I don't know what the laws are.
Well, I, I, I know that when we were looking at these before, we were looked at, looking at lining. We're talking about light pollution isn't supposed to go over the property line. You have outside lights that are supposed to be shielded in such way that it doesn't. So we, I could see where something like that could be applied to security cameras as well.
Right, well, light pollution, there's a lot of that going on in the city.
Right. But I'm just saying that because we have an ordinance that deals with light pollution, I think that could be, that could translate to requiring something to say, you know, your security, home security cameras should be limited to the scope of your property.
I think it should at least be mentioned.
Did you mention this at council, councilman? Did you bring this up at council?
No, it's something new that has come to my attention. So I'm here, you know, here in the committee that's going over the codes. I thought I would bring it up and when you get to that area, discuss it.
It is, it is our position as a committee to review the code, not invent the code. So I refer it to you as city council on behest of this committee to pursue your situation. Thank you. Any comments from the city representatives? And I have to compliment these two people that put up with a lot of grief, et cetera, including the lady behind me, Patty, who keeps us fully informed. At this time, I'd like to call for an adjournment. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? So ordered.